Okay, we have agenda approval.
Do the please or?
Oh, yeah. Sorry.
See the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in our hearts. Just like God would do in this case. Okay, um, agenda. Do you want your motion to approve?
I move that we approve the agenda.
Second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, I vote for it. I do can't. Um, motion is carried unanimously. Um, approval of minutes.
I move that we approve the minutes from June seventeenth.
Aye, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I wonder if motion is carried unanimously. Conditional reserving CZ two five dot oh three dot uh oh one Hendrick Advanced Manufacturing Campus.
Um, thank you. Um, let me go ahead and pull up my memo. Um, so I actually had a difficult time originally making a presentation for CZ twenty five zero three zero one. Um, so I just included only amendment. Um, the reasoning is is because they are, uh, Hendrick owns the land and they're proposing an advanced manufacturing campus on the site and it runs in alliance with the development standards that was passed in Matthews that's adjacent to the property. Um, this is the subject property on Matthews Indian Trail. It's difficult actually to see it's pink and it's surrounded by their, because it's C seventy four. But, um, they're proposing a conditional zoning industrial with site development standards, but they're not proposing a site plan yet because they don't know what the end users are going to be. So that's why it was kind of difficult to show you because I didn't want to pull up their site plan which doesn't have exact buildings or anything on it yet, just development standards. Um, so what they have included is they're gonna have permitted uses that are allowed in industrial and they've also included a list of things that they do not also want in the development standards list. Um, they've also included information about transportation parking. They've also included, uh, regional context, which is the development standards matching with the town of Matthews that was approved in twenty twenty three. Now, I did provide this list of development standards in the packet. They have since updated it. Um, but the general things that it includes are the permitted uses and densities. So it most, it mostly compiles with the industrial zoning category with some excluded uses. It would comply with the building lot type of industrial as well. Um, it also includes appearances, um, like I said, transportation enforcing standards. Um, and the reason it was difficult to, is because I think you'd want to see the vision that's the goal, which is included in the packet and I think the applicant's here to present it. Um, so if you have any specific questions about, you know, how to, how this is gonna look, I think just looking at that, um, applicant's, uh, proposed, uh, vision slides would be helpful. Um, and it also included in the packet, so it's on this slide. So if you have any specific questions, let me know. I know it's a little bit difficult for me to kind of come up and try to explain it because it's, the site plan doesn't have a site plan attached to it. It's, it has development standards attached to it and so it's just a new conditional zoning.
So based on what we saw in the packet, uh, there were some examples over the places that they've done like Concord, et cetera. You're looking toward that type of conceptual?
Correct, and I, I have, Apple's gonna, gonna present their, um, presentation and I might be able to ask them some things that they're marketing towards.
Okay.
Max, where's this in proximity to like any potential future light rail development?
Yeah, so it's right, it's very close to, let me see. Um, so the proposed light rail does go through the Matthews site.
Okay.
Um, and I don't have the specific alignment pulled up, um, but it does, uh, as far as I'm aware. Sorry about this. Sorry, hold this. Um, it goes across CPCC lane and then onto the front edge of Independence.
Okay.
And then comes down in front of Scott Park Toyota and has a stop right in front of Big Tex trailers. And then continues down Independence. So it's less than half mile away.
Okay.
Um, this specific zoning site.
I guess this would probably be a question for the applicant, but would there be potential like partnerships with the college that's there?
Yeah, I think that's a great question for the applicant.
Yeah, okay.
Um, but I'll be here if I have any specific zoning questions. I think since there's no specific site plan, it's hard to explain.
Sure.
So if it's okay, I think you can help me explain the project.
What is the process when there is a site plan?
Yeah, so you were able to look at the site plan, critique, you know, the densities, the uses, the site's specific layout. Now, they don't know the end users, so that's why it's just the development standards. So I think, what was the last one that we talked about? Um, we talked about, there was one, I don't know if you were here, can't remember, but there was one unpleasant thing for the shopfront commercial and town losing career. So you were able to, uh, critique the shopfront uses and the townhome uses and we talked about the layout being shifted a little bit in the conditional zoning and specific uses that they did and did not want. So you're able to do that in the conditional zoning process.
Okay.
Um, you will?
Good evening, everyone. I'm Bernard Medina with Hendrick. I've worked there for about fifteen years and, um, letting the past couple of years, uh, I want to roll in development and working with colleague here Greg Hartley with Akron Motor Services. Um, civil engineering background, um, kind of coming up with this plan. Appreciate you all taking the time to look at it and listen to it. We're, we're here to answer any questions you had, but good questions already. I think a lot of them could be answered as we walk through this presentation. I'm not gonna read this whole thing, but this kind of really captures our vision statement really well for what we want to, uh, to bring to this area with this whole campus. Um, and really the best thing, it's kind of like some of the pictures that when you think of a manufacturing campus, sometimes a dirty picture can come to your mind, a less kind of clean environment. Um, but the type of manufacturing that we're looking at and the tenants that we're looking at attracting, um, are very different. Kind of why that advanced tag is, is added to it. It is a much cleaner, more technical, um, high use of technology and that's of course, as you know, rapidly changing and growing and applying those technologies to manufacturing processes, um, is evolving. We're seeing that in our own work that we do, um, in Concord area, um, we have headed motorsports and our technical solutions, sort of sector, I guess you could say. These are the types of sectors that we're looking at. Again, some good visuals here, aerospace and defense are some of the bigger users that we're seeing, uh, in uptick and these are just some visuals of some of the different processes happening, a lot of additive CNC machining and welding. At the Concord, we've kind of taken a lot of these expertise and skills that we use and grow on over time in racing and NASCAR racing and applying that, I mean, really boil that down to what did, that's core, it's manufacturing. So we're kind of taking those skills and applying it to things outside of racing. And we've had to do that unfortunately, just the way, um, racing has evolved over the years where it's, um, less of us building the car from the ground up and fielding it in NASCAR's Cup Series. And it's more of us assembling. Um, and so all those, we, we calculated that a couple of years ago, we would have, in this generation of racing, we probably would have lost a hundred and twenty to a hundred and fifty jobs across our campus. That was, at the time, that would have been almost a third of our workforce that we were gonna have to try to even find other jobs for or at least that we didn't no longer have or want for you. So that spurred us kind of thinking more about the root, who we are and what we're doing. Um, and ultimately ended up being manufacturing and we were able to apply those. And to this point today, we built two eighty thousand square foot buildings, uh, in that area to support that workforce and we've actually added to that workforce, which was a huge win for us. It's the last thing we want to do is, um, not just to tell a teammate, but it's their own family that, you know, they have a job for you. That's a big win, but, um, long-winded way of saying this is the type of, of manufacturing that we're seeing that we might give up to see our campus there and see what we've built. There's no better visual than you know and kind of walk and feel exactly kind of what we're envisioning. Uh, but these are the types of processes happening there. Um, and we do think of it as a campus, we think of it as a park, uh, we do see it a lot of places. Maybe a question about partnering with the local university CPCC is obviously next door to the property. I think that is absolutely something you see doing and we've, we've already started discussions with CPCC about, um, we already have Hendrick, we partner on the automotive side with technician training. We certainly see depending on the user that ends up coming here and you see this in our users up in Concord area, um, whether they're wanting that, they're, they're always learning new things as well and trying to keep that workforce educated and continuing to help them grow, just not just for our organization, but in their own careers is, is a huge win and obviously a positive for the education institutions as well. The nice thing, oh, I will highlight one thing on this, this page, this, that top point, assured development readiness. We're starting to get, we actually got one this week, a lot of solicitations for the property. And I would say every single one of the last few solicitations that we've gotten, they're wanting some sort of site readiness, assured site readiness as part of, um, their selection process of choosing a place to go. So these, these types of tenants that we're looking at, these, these manufacturers that we're looking at, they don't have a lot of time to, to go through zoning processes and, and wait for utilities and also we're trying as best as we can to think forward and, and kind of making the site developable, ready for development. Because time is always at the essence there. The latest one we got, they're wanting a decision by the end of this year and by the beginning of next year, starting construction. So it's, they're, they're wanting them to be fast, they're usually coming with, um, an average income that's higher than the average. And, um, usually with two hundred plus jobs, it's hard to know, it just depends on the user, but that's, that's the type and they're always looking for expansion in the future too. So that's, that's one of the key points when we think about this park and while we're going through this process now is just to be ready to not miss out on opportunity that, that they, they're gonna pass on us because we, we don't have six months to pick up the schedule that they're already looking for, so.
Yeah, I think that's a lot of the reason why we're here with a non-defined site plan is because we're trying to get the zoning ready and on any instance of what we did in Concord, we had what ended up being the GM Defense Manufacturing Customer Innovation Center.
Yeah.
MCI, C is what we call it. But that project came to us in October and by January, we were having to do the dirt. And then fourteen months after that, the building was complete and they were starting bringing employees. So that's where they build like the ISBs, industry support vehicles, which have been the hall of the news and stuff. And then that's what Hendrick is, um, providing parts for those as part of that secondary two eighty thousand square foot buildings. The original building for the GM Defense was two hundred and seven, five thousand square feet. So it's kind of adding on to that and that's the reason we're here with out-defined site plan. We would love to come in with a site plan and say, hey, this is what we're gonna have. The issue is we have, uh, some of these in-Cordies are two hundred thousand square feet. They want, some of them are just acreage, they want fifty to eighty acres. Some of them want expansion to two hundred acres. So those, that's the reason we're here with out-defined site plan.
And kind of to that point, we understand that's a little bit unusual, um, which is why we've tried to take the development standards, obviously want to adhere to that and we've kind of stripped out some uses that we don't want to see there. We don't think you all want to see there, um, so we're trying to be very much in alignment with that and understanding. With the flexibility, we also need to have some guidelines that we, we need to adhere to as we do get a user in and start to track him to a final plan. This is just highlighting some of the areas features, I think, um, this speaks to the area. It's, it's not a hard sell, I think, I would say to, to companies looking to locate to an area like this. There's just, there's just so much in the area and the region to be, you've got beaches, you've got mountains. It's not a hard convincing to locate somebody in the area, but this is just highlighting some of that access, road access, highway access, which is important for, you know, manufacturing and rebuilding that large supplies and pieces of equipment, just feeding kind of their, their work lines. And then these next two slides are two examples. This was an example in the UK, a hundred and fifty acres, so pretty close to about the size of what we have. This one is really pretty neat. You see a lot of those names there at the bottom, Boeing, Flannery, Rolls Royce. I like to, University of Sheffield, uh, they partnered with that university there and a lot of this technical training kind of where they're feeding, they're feeding new workforce, maybe, but they're also existing workforce being able to continually educate as, um, times change. So that's, that's a pretty neat thing about this space and this has been going on for a decade now and you can see like twenty thousand jobs.
They actually built in the Cardinal McLaren site there for the F one?
It's, it's one of their, um, Flannery cars, there's a separate F one facility for that.
Okay. I thought it was in Sheffield, but their, their home base, I just can't remember off the top.
That might be the one. I can't remember off the top of my head. But that is, that is just a neat space. That was kind of one of the first parks that we, we kind of, we're thinking about what we can do down there. This was one of the first ones that popped up because it has been going on for so long and, you know, it's, those are some big names attracted in there and they built the entire community and city to kind of tower it out. Pretty neat. On the comeback to the F one, they had a cool video there. It's just kind of an overview of the campus that they have there, it's developed, continuing to develop. E Y Lilly is a, is an interesting, um, just example. This is kind of speaks to the assured site readiness and development. So they were actually slated to go somewhere else. And then wherever they were planning to go, whether it was utilities, only if something wasn't lined up right where they, they weren't gonna be able to get to production when they needed to, the operational way. So it pivoted because Concord was sitting ready with all the utility people, which is on, but ready to make it happen. And Congress ended, they ended up landing back there. But it really kind of speaks to, they were ready to, to do whatever it takes to land this, this order. And the, the economic impact over time, which is a staggering, kind of like the numbers there, almost six billion dollars of economic impact. They had to equip, uh, they're still like older debt, but they're, they're, they've got a nice facility there now.
Yeah.
Are they open at this time? Are they open at this time?
They are, they are. So that, that project, from the time they switched to come into Concord to the time they started moving dirt was less than ninety days.
Wow.
Because they went through, they pushed the resoning through really fast. And it was a zoning issue at their other site. They ended up not selecting that site for that reason. And this just happened, this is on the, um, the old Philip Morris property of the Concord society. That's, if you drive up twenty nine, you can see that facility is fantastic.
Just curious, this doesn't influence our, uh, decision on anything, but just out of curiosity, are the, the, are the companies like buying the parcels and then building or are they leasing from?
It's a mix, I would say. Yeah, we've been doing the same. We talked about that in just a minute.
Didn't mean to get you guys off track, you're sorry.
Now, if I, if I ask questions, I'll be like, I should get an update there, there is an, there is a somewhere. So this is our campus in Concord.
Wow.
What you see in that top picture, that's, that is what we have at Hendrick Motorsports. Those are two race shops supporting, uh, four race teams. And in the bottom two pictures, um, you'll see on the right, that is, uh, GM's Charlotte Technical Center, General Motors. That's, they're in a lot of engineering and R and D, that's supporting all racing teams. You may have seen some of that in, yeah, for example. Uh, it's a very neat facility, that's a facility that we built, uh, we leased to General Motors for that. But that also spurred on, um, a couple of other projects. One being that GM Defense facility, that should kind of be some, uh, collaboration there and then.
That's the long building at the top of the top picture, because that's the GM Defense.
And the GM Technical Center is just off to the left in that upper picture. So there's a lot of connectivity there. On the right of that picture is actually what you're seeing in the, the front shot on the bottom left picture. Hendrick Motorsports Technical Solutions, that's where we do our manufacturing work, we're supporting, uh, GM Defense, that we're customer to them. Uh, we're a customer to us. And so these, these are all working kind of together, you know, so that's, um, and this, that empty pad that you see behind it is where, um, General Motors is, uh, Cadillac is coming in to do that F one facility. And that's, that is a, uh, we've sold that property to them and they're developing that along with us. You just, you can kind of see where they all play, the general support for them, they have the technical center lined up there with engineering support they have in there. So it's, it's very much a canvas where one thing feeds another. Um, I think probably our campus Motorsports was there before. Once through that technical, so we have, uh, Charlotte Technical Center, CPCC. Once that ended there, that spurred on all the others. So it just kind of becomes out of that. But you see a lot of that in manufacturing where if you can kind of have all the pieces, they're ultimately feeding some sort of product or any of which is, it's helpful to have that proximity there. I guess you'd estimate a thousand jobs between all the different buildings there. We'll grow, we're continuing to grow, uh, we're, we're expanding our current, we just opened the area this year, so. Probably buy some more land at some point, but, um, you know, it's pretty, that's, it's easy just to see, just to see all the pictures. Uh, we do invite you to come up and see the campus, see how it's all working, but it's, uh, it's all very much related to each other. It's kind of what we envision when we think about this land out there and we want to bring the same thing and, um, that might be something cool that hopefully aligns with the talent of your objectives as well.
Might be a max question, but what, what watershed would serve this?
Yeah.
This is a Creek Creek watershed.
Okay.
But I think if, if there's any water for Matthews.
Yeah, that's right.
Oh, yeah, since it is adjacent to the Matthews.
So Charlotte Water, um, yeah.
And then any like potential road improvements would be at the, play, at the like design stage, not at this stage, correct?
Yeah.
What about the, uh, McKee Road extension? That would come in kind of close to this, wouldn't it?
Yeah. You can run it down.
Can talk to a little bit about the transportation, because we've got a lot of discussions already about that.
Alright.
So, yeah.
McKee Road would extend that to here. So this is Pleasant Plains.
Right.
McKee Road is right here, south, uh, southern portion of Stallings.
You can go right down the middle, yeah.
For Matthews past, I can't remember what this neighborhood's called at the top of my head, they're Matthews. Um, but it's gonna go past, um, onto John Street.
Okay.
And Matthews has a master plan for this area, um, with mixed use community.
Okay.
And then it goes up into Hendrick's site as well.
Okay.
So I know that was a, this is just a, that was a lot of information, uh, regional context, but I can go over more detail after they finish presenting.
And the key extension is twenty seven completion?
I have to look at the website to get that.
I believe it is.
Um, let's just go.
Sorry to interrupt your presentation.
Can see how that falls into what you guys are doing if it, you know, holds it up.
So this is all the street NCDOT projects on our engineering website. And then McKee Road segment, let's see. Uh, guys, it doesn't look like there's a timeline on, on our website, but we do have the site plan for it. So I apologize, I'll find, I can find that out for you. Um, that's something engineering window, so I apologize though.
I thought, I thought I read something on the NCDOT site, it was twenty seven.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, that's, that's kind of really, hopefully, even just, hopefully give you a picture of the aesthetic people that, that's important, that's important to us. In racing, we brought, um, sponsors, I really, really, I think a lot of partners and would constantly bring them in to the campus, they're bringing their guests of, of theirs through our campus just to have something, need to show them the ways that we're working together and everything. So naturally we want the place to look good and so we're invested a lot in that, um, with the development. We want it to be something that everybody's proud of. So it's important what we're trying to convey in somebody's picture. Again, kind of, if you have a chance to come up and visit us, you'll be able to see some of that.
I do want to talk a little bit about the transportation side. So we have already had conversations with NCEOT on the regional planning side as well as CATS and they've all agreed that if, if a user comes in and says, hey, I want the property that's a hundred acres right in the middle, they've all agreed that we would be able to relocate the roadways and realign the future CATS alignment. But we, we, we have dedicated, we will make sure that we dedicate that right away. We did a similar thing, um, behind the automotive dealerships on Independence. There's about fifteen acres reserved in the back of that for a future Wallace Road extension.
Oh, wow. Oh, okay.
So that was already done as part of the rezoning budget. Eight or nine years ago, probably. It's, we put an area, Jack, William, and all those, so that's part of the discussion as well.
So a question about sewer capacity. If you were even able to build today, is that capacity available?
So we actually, we had, Charlotte Water has done some actual measurements on flows recently and they are presenting those to us in about a week and a half in a meeting to let us know what the capacity is and what the options are for how we get additional capacity for all of that. Um, we had conversations preliminary with the head engineer at Charlotte Water and with Patrick Niall in Willing County, um, assistant county manager, I think, um, about how that gets served. It looks, it appears that there ought to be some sort of agreement, it looks like pretty much everything would probably go to Charlotte Water, but we don't have a definitive answer on that, we're waiting for this meeting. So they, it kind of, we were supposed to have it already, but they postponed to do it all the rain events, all the infiltration events, sanitary, throws off the measurement, so.
Right, right.
But we should have some results, uh, like I said, probably about, I think it's a week and a half, we should come to it.
So Max, does, when you talk about sewer like that and the water, since most of the acreage is in Mecklenburg?
Yeah, they would have to have an interlocal agreement.
Yeah, so that, if like they were gonna tap into Mecklenburg's side of the sewer, they just need to talk to.
So Union County and Charlotte Water would have to have an interlocal agreement and then Hendrick.
I guess when they get that test, they'll know.
Yeah, when we, we literally talked to both of them about the fact, once we get those results, we are all coming together. We actually went through it, um, Duke Energy had a site readiness program and they brought in Mecklenburg Economic Development who brought in all of those partners and kind of gave us a rundown and said, look, these are the things that you need to do on your next steps. Once you get this figured out, you need to have a group meeting with everybody involved to try to get all that resolved.
Okay.
So this was, the Mecklenburg side of this was approved by Matthews in May of twenty twenty three.
Correct.
What has happened since then?
We've done all of our weapon delineations, um, we've gone through and done all of our environmental permitting as far as, uh, the state historic preservation office. We've not done any like impacts to weapons or strings or anything like that. We're waiting until we have a solid layout based on some of these requests that are coming to come in. Um, we've done all of our topographic surveys, so we're pretty much ready to do all the design as soon as we get a user. And then we've been working on the sewer capacity, water capacity, talking to, um, natural gas. So we had one user that had this really high gas use that wanted to come in and we were like, okay, this is, we're gonna have to extend gas for four miles. Pressure's what they wanted, so, and the load. So we've been doing a lot of background work with all the utility companies to make sure that we have the infrastructure available. The pressures that they wanted, so, and the loads, so we've been doing a lot of background work with all the utility companies to make sure that we have the infrastructure available.
And some of that's been done in part with and parallel with the Duke Site Readiness Study. Which is really an exercise to. Act like you already have a user, and go through the process, like, are you actually running utilities here, which is a big takeaway for us, as we went through that exercise. But a lot of that, a lot of that program is just getting us ready, more ready for a really user to show up. And so we've, Grace has been working a lot on trying to figure out how we get that off.
We've been doing, and we've been working on this for about three years, trying to get all of this stuff understood, and make sure that we have. Once we get to that point, we have the capacity that's needed for basically any kind of a user that comes in.
So I know John had asked a question earlier, but like how does it, how does it typically work? So you get company X in, defense contractor X, are you their landlord, or how does that agreement work?
Uh, the GM Defense, yes, that, that basically Hendrick owns the property and leases that, and takes care of the entire property. They have some environmental things that they do, because they have some protocols, but basically, yes, it's a landlord situation. In this latest instance with the F1 team, it's basically the design was almost complete, that they wanted to purchase the property. So the finishing of the contract through the design team is switched over to this new entity, but Hendrick is the owner's rep. So they finish out the development, build the building, and then turn it over. So that's kind of the model, if we were to just stay here as well, Hendrick is involved through the process.
It really can be a next to a good one. Some, some entities come in and they want to own the land, purchase the land, and some are open to it. It's just kind of, it's a, obviously, no matter which way they want to try to do it, we want to make sure that it appears to the standards that we developed. And how we operate the town, and make sure it's all open to you.
Since the majority of this project would not be in our town, how would it work in terms of corporate tax and payroll tax coming to this town versus going to Matthews?
Yeah.
Yeah, so we're, we're trying to lay this out in a way that some, there are some smaller pieces that are actually in Stallings as far as like the property. So we're trying to lay this out, so we have parcels that are designated where the building would try to be as much in the property as possible. Community County and Town Stallings as possible. The issue is, we have some buffer areas right there next to the residential properties that we're also being mined for, but there's more than enough. And our preliminary, assuming we would be able to guess what somebody wants, we can fit buildings on the property, so you are getting the tax value out of it.
And it kind of, again, comes back to the user, how they're building, their site thing, it's, it's hard to really, yeah.
Hopefully they buy houses and shop here. Eat lunch here.
Yeah, and also, that's kind of what we see, even employees who live there, obviously, when you, you work there, you gotta take lunch at some point, and you're moving to living in this area. So there's, there's, we see a lot of that happening up there, and obviously, assume a lot of that happens here as well.
Yeah. With these types of projects, let's say you're hiring a thousand people, what percentage of those generally come from within your, you know, a couple county radius? Versus are you making job offers to people who are moving from upstate?
So we, we hit, yeah, we hit on a level to do that, and that Duke Site Readiness Study, they did, as part of that program, there was a gentleman from a site selection firm, nationally recognized. And he gave us some info on that. Typically, you see a large portion of that hired from here, some of that does depend on the use too. Like, like this F1 facility, that's, there's some goals in that, that are probably, they're looking for someone who's got experience in that, maybe not someone here. But that's not the case for everyone, it kind of comes back to the user, who's, whatever type of work that they're doing. I think, I'm worried it's not, you know, same for, for some of these other projects, it's, I think it's a good level.
The F1 team is definitely the anomaly where they're hiring internationally.
They're quite specialized.
Quite specialized, for sure, yeah, yeah, yeah. Definitely, yeah, it's definitely, yeah.
But there's, there's, second question, it's about the level.
The US is still tidling through that, you know, we're not quite at that level that Europeans, so. A lot of, a lot of gold to do on this side.
But it is interesting, I think one thing, now I have the pictures still in there, but one of the pictures that shows the manufacturing that actually, in our original presentation, is from CPCC's. The dance manufacturing program that's not at this campus, it's on the, right, it's on the uptown.
Uptown campus.
Yeah, so that lower right picture is actually from their facility.
So, yeah, so that's something that CPCC could typically, sign it out, just kind of almost co-located.
So you're trying to prove this here?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So just to finish up, so Steph does recommend approval, we see that economy opportunity is going to win to the town. So, just kind of give you some finishing remarks. And then here's the regional context you wanted to see. The Matthews side is in yellow, and it's not besides for this project.
Another discussion, ready for a motion, or?
Any, any other questions?
I guess the question, Max, is like, there's no, I mean, there's a residual benefit of economic impact of people living, working, et cetera. But there's no guarantee, there's no way to guarantee that, depending on the client, that they will build something in Indian County, and they can just say, hey, we're going to stay on this side of the line. He was, kind of, yeah.
What happens, yeah, like, I guess this is design, where you have to design, uh, you can't have a building in half one, half the other. So you would really have to.
I can get to that.
Yeah.
Actually, we do have that situation up at the Motorsports campus, where there's a, there are several buildings split by the county line.
Uh huh.
So it's taxed, I, I believe the way the taxes work is split, split evenly, based on square footage. And then just the approval process, it really depends on who's going to respond typically with fire, and who's providing services, and who, which county does the review. So we have that situation.
You said two conflicting things, you said split evenly based on square footage, did you mean proportionally?
Proportionally, yes.
Okay, not fifty, like ninety-nine and one, square footage, that's not proportionally.
Do we have any properties in Shenamara that are split, that are straddling the property?
Yeah, straddle there.
Shenamara and other places, too.
Yeah, that's the one.
There's a few of them, yeah.
Okay.
And this is the, where the F1 facility is going.
Uh huh.
And this is, these buildings here are straddling, that's Indian Motorsports proper, everything that feeds racing. And a county line, right through the middle of this.
Okay, yeah. Wow.
Well, at least it's a cohesive, yeah, instead of all here and a little way over there.
It does present some challenges. But definitely.
Any other questions?
Nope.
I'm good. I move that we approve CZ twenty five point oh three point oh one, and find that it's reasonable, consistent with the comprehensive land use program.
Second?
All in his favor.
Aye.
All right. This is the council in August.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Next one.
Next, conditional zoning for CZ two five dot oh three dot oh two, Stallings Warehouse, Mr. Max.
So yes, thank you, yes, this is conditional zoning CZ twenty five zero three zero two. It's a rezoning at eight two four Stallings Road, and it's a conditional zoning for a self-storage warehouse and a commercial retail facility. So the site is one point four one acres in size, it's across from Berry Plastics and on Gribble Road. And they're seeking to do a conditional zoning to industrial, because the, their proposed uses don't comply with the use table in industrial. So self-storage and commercial retail multi-tenant are now allowed, and they're also requesting alleviation from specific sections in the ordinance. So I wanted to pull up and go on maps to the context. I think I had it highlighted originally, but I changed it, when I was going over the last conditional zoning. But as you can see, everything in pink is in Stallings, and then this blue is Indian Trail. Berry Plastics is this large facility here. The site in question is located on Stallings Road and Gribble, across from East Coast Truck in the north. Just to give you some context of where this location is. They're proposing a twenty seven thousand six hundred and forty square foot development that includes a self-storage facility, shipping and packaging, retail store, executive offices, and multi-tenant spaces. And they've created a presentation that's going to go really into detail on the site, so I just wanted to make sure that you guys knew exactly what they're proposing for the use. They are requesting some alleviation from the use table, so example, multi-tenant retail. But they're also requesting a relief from the sidewalk component on Gribble Road. As you remember, Board of Adjustments approved a sidewalk alleviation from sidewalk along another property on Gribble Road. And this applicant is doing the same, but just for a different process, through a conditional zoning. They're also requesting the use of faux stone and steel cladding in the building exterior, that's not in our ordinance, but they're going to show you some examples in the presentation. And they're also requesting permission to flip the building front and the parking, so the parking would be up front and the building would be in the rear. And that's actually a suggestion from staff, the reasoning is, our ordinance requests facilities up front, but Berry Plastics, I don't know if you've driven by or walked that area, it's very loud.
Yeah.
So if we were to propose a retail business that's up on, along Gribble Road, they may be able to hear inside, I'm not sure. But I, I believe that it'd be more, uh, more businesses were located, those farther away from Berry Plastics, with parking in front.
So Max, on the alleviation from the sidewalk on Gribble Road, I know the case that came before Board of Adjustments, it was one that was bracketed by Indian Trail. So the sidewalk had no potential to ever connect to anything in Stallings. In this case, though, the concern is that if we set this pattern of doing this, there's never going to be sidewalk in Gribble Road. In that case, if that is like what potentially the future is on Gribble Road, could we look at, or staff look at, like, just not having that as a requirement on Gribble Road anymore? Or if like we really want that to happen, it has to start somewhere, and that other case was kind of unique, it's a.
So Seth has actually thought about this before, we haven't brought it into council, I think we've just been kind of recommending conditional zoning. So there's been a few, there's another conditional zoning, I don't know if you remember, a few months ago, there was one at this property for automotive repair.
Sure, correct.
With that request of alleviation from the sidewalk, and that was approved by council.
Okay.
So I would say that historically, there probably will not be sidewalk on Gribble Road, at least if it didn't pass.
So it just seems like it might be, for efficiency sake in the future, you said we're not having to do this dance every time there's a case comes, you know, on Gribble Road, that. Maybe that could be handled on one.
Yeah, we may look into it, we require sidewalk and all new developments.
Yeah.
The only question I would have is, since they're going to have retail there, does that justify a sidewalk?
So they, so I'll get into my next.
The Stallings Road would still require the sidewalk, right?
They're actually required with a greenway then, along Stallings Road, and they are including that.
Okay, alright.
Um, so, just going over the site plan, the proposed site plan. So a lot of the, so just kind of think, up at the top of the page is Stallings Road. Then the greenway, which is a twelve foot multi-use path with the plantings, then the parking lot, then the proposed retail. And then the entering into one of the front tenant spaces to get into the self-storage facility. The applicants has, is going to present that as well, to be able to talk about that. And then on the right of the site plan is Gribble Road, where they're going to have plantings along the building instead of the sidewalk. Um, to the left, I was going to go into more context, or southeast is actually a road called Tracy Circle, that's an Indian Trail, and it's a private road. So they can connect to it.
Oh, wow, okay.
And that connects into this mobile home park in Indian Trail. So as you can see, it's a, it's kind of like a donut hole in the middle, it's owned by Indian Trail. And then I also wanted to show you, and some questions came up in the subcommittee meeting, about town center, and how this relates to our downtown goals. It's a little bit away from our town center, so we have an adopted town centers plan and adopted zoning for the area, so this bright blue is town center. We have adopted a plan that goes all the way up to Community Park and Park. And as part of that plan, we've also identified both sides of Stallings Road to be future town center. But we did one side of the road to town center, all the way up to Industrial Drive and Berry Plastics. We have, town staff has not done the other side of the road yet, we don't know if we're going to, just because we wanted to use the other side of the road as. See if there was any economic catalysts that came up, when we resented, and it's kind of stayed as it is right now. And I think that's due to sewer capacity, this is a Creek Creek watershed as well, so there's very limited sewer capacity constraints. Possibly on the other side of Old Monroe Road, and the, so I'm going to show you the map, is a different watershed, it's split by Old Monroe Road. And there might be some additional commercial opportunities that are maybe located on this, on this side. There's two, you saw a conditional zoning last meeting on this side, and then there's another one that's going to come up in a future meeting for this town center. So town center, even though it's been a long time coming, you can certainly get some hits, but I just wanted to make sure you knew, understood the regional context of where this is located in relation to town center, it's not in our town center plan. So they're also requesting a few alleviations, but nothing really out of the ordinary for the proposed conditions. The only thing that I think that I want to make sure is pointed out is that they're going to use a impervious gravel.
I saw that, yeah.
I can't, what's the name of it?
Gravel paper?
Gravel paper, it's like.
Povious gravel paper?
Povious gravel paper, excuse me, I apologize, it's a new product for the town, we don't have any projects that have this site, this parking lot. So I would say the applicant is going to kind of explain a little bit more in detail, but that's one thing that I wanted to point out, that's really the main change. I think the site layout matches the future goals of the town, but the parking lot, I think just want to make sure you guys.
This would be in lieu of asphalt or concrete?
Yeah.
What about this?
Um, but staff does recommend approval, we want more economic opportunities in the town, I think it's a good vision for an industrial site. Gribble Road is historically all automotive as well, it's close to our town center, and it's incorporating our greenway. So I think it's a good start to entering into that town center, it's going to transition from a commercial retail industrial into our town center.
I have a question about, so the faux stone is obviously in lieu of real stone, the steel cladding, I know is not on the Stallings Road side.
Just on the other side.
Right, what is the, is that in lieu of a further faux stone material?
So you would, they would be required to build, work in, or on the sides where the streets are facing. So on Gribble Road, Tracy Circle, but not on the rear.
Okay.
So you're just requesting additional two sides to be, uh, to be glad at this level, got it?
This was in pretty close proximity where the truck repair facility is.
It's right across the street.
And that was built before there was requirements like for the appearance and things like that?
Right, so this was approved in twenty twenty? Industrial allows major automobile repair by bike.
Right.
And a major automobile repair includes semi-trucks. So they, we also didn't have the street state plan adopted, and the greenway plan was adopted when this was, when they first applied. So they weren't required to build greenway. So they weren't required to build greenway at the, at the time.
Remember that, that building is steel clad all the way around, correct?
Um, so yeah, I would say it has, it was approved by a different.
Yeah. I'm just comparing like appearance of this project versus that. Could it be a more attractive project?
I mean, my opinion will be, but it's, cause it's not doing automotive repair.
Right.
The town, we've done a lot of condensing in the use table. And then Katie presented a really big use table change. And we have consolidated automotive uses to just the commercial districts, C seventy-four and industrial. So technically this industrial site could be a major automobile repair by right. But I would say staff, just my personal opinion, wouldn't be too excited for even more automotive repairs or something. When you go down Gribble Road, it's all automotive repair. So we, I think we have, we have a lot of talent.
Is the sidewalk part just gonna be like whatever we?
So concrete is what they're requesting. So I think originally we proposed asphalt. And then after subcommittee meeting, the council was in favor of concrete. I think he said it would be reasonable. I bet. But there's a really detailed presentation for this site. I would say, I usually don't say this about Seminoles, but I think his presentation is going as well. He did a really good job explaining the site. So I just wanted to kinda throw that out there. But yeah, you too.
So good afternoon, good afternoon. So just a small thing, so the Hendrix proposal is a lot bigger, larger scale. This is suddenly a much smaller size, but you need kind of a good healthy mix of small and big developments for the town to keep developing. So I'll get started. So what we do is kind of give you an overview of the site information, a proposed plan. And the zoning overview, what did you question from the conditional zoning? I think Max moved, walked and walked you through the, what I'm requesting. I just kind of list them. And I have details around each of those conditions. I think we have about twelve conditional zoning that I'm requesting. I have detail again why we're requesting it and how we plan to still kind of make the property look pleasing and good. So we can kind of go through each of these or what we think is prior, you know, we're very focused on. Then just a timeline from in terms of what is the timeline for conditional zoning itself.
Sorry, could you just share your name?
Oh, sorry, I didn't mention, my name is Joe Nathan, Joseph Nathan.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, thank you.
I was excited to talk about it.
Understandably.
Yep. And I'm, I'm a citizen, I'm in Iberia, in Union County, in Medellin, so not far from here. Okay, so I think this is something that Max already walked through, so I'll keep moving. So this is the proposed site plan that we have. And so if you see here, right, so we, we have a parking lot in the front. And the entrance will be through the, through Stallings Road. And we also have a secondary driveway on Gribble Road. And this is something which I spoke, the fire marshal is, is needed from our fire path as exit. So we'll, we'll try and make it a thorough fire or not, because maybe too close intersection. If that's the case, then we'll just, I'm mixed to talking in CDOT. And if they, if they feel this is, this cannot be a thorough driveway, we'll kind of use it only for emergency purposes. So that's the parking lot. And as Max mentioned, we plan to use something called a perviable gravel paper. So this is in lieu of a water retention, water retention pond. So the gravel paper is typically used in urban development areas. This is a company that's in headquarters in Texas, Houston, Texas. Many of the new developments there in, in front, in urban spaces are gonna use these because you need water retention pond. And the gravel in the parking lot serves as, serves as water storage. It provides very high, I mean, it provides a very good infiltration compared to even better than landscape surfaces. And in case for any rain or the grading will be done in such a way that all water color collects in the, in the parking lot. So under the parking lot, basically. The gravel serves as the water storage. And we are kind of working with our engineering team to define what be the, what be the depth to which we leave the gravel. So it can kind of get all the water in. And we'll be providing a presentation to the engineering team in Stallings Town. We'll be giving a specific, the specific detail of calculation, but while we provide a higher review, it seemed to be okay with them. Of course, we do need to get to the next level and give the detail of the stormwater, stormwater control.
I think I saw later in your presentation, there's like a picture of, of that, right? Is it loose stones or is it like a fixed surface that just had its porous?
It's, it's loose gravel. So what, what we do is we have like a gravel paper, it's like a plastic grid. It's installed and top of that you put gravel, so the gravel doesn't fly in or you don't have dust coming out. Typically if it's just empty gravel, you have a lot of dust and it keeps moving. Here the, here those grid, plastic grid, which is also an eco, it's made from recycled plastic. And it supports weight of even, it's, it's more handy than even asphalt or concrete. And that can just make sure that the gravel doesn't go away. It's, it's, it's in, it's not losing clean dust.
In other projects where this has been used, what has been done to, to prevent weed growth within the gravel?
We do have a gravel, so, so they install, so we would install a, 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 I don't know, I would say a barrier.
A landscape fabric type?
Yeah. A barrier is used and then on, on top of that, the gravel is used. I, I guess we haven't asked a question to the company, but I can certainly ask.
I just, it was concerned, you know, that there, whether there'd be a requirement from the town to keep the weeds under control or anything.
Asking.
Cause I could see that potential, it could be a, if it was not maintained well, then that could be an issue.
Yeah, if your ordinance requires you to maintain like your parking lot. So for example, like if a shopping center didn't have their parking lot order, we could send a violation notice to fix it.
Yeah, so that's it, I'm gonna need to make sure that my, that's only, we have, we have. So and as Max mentioned, it's a retail space, it would be the front and we have the self-storage facility in the back of the property. So roughly, most of it will be self-storage and we just make sure that the park, the retail space in such a way that the, the number of parking spaces we use is optimized for both retail and self-storage. That's how we can, that's why you see there's a forty, forty feet width for the retail and eighty feet for the self-storage facility.
Would the access to the self-storage be through like an interior corridor or outside doors?
Through the corridor, so all the way to the left, you see a small dotted line. So that's why we plan to use the entrance to the, and this is actually a solution that came up in the subcommittee meeting. Usually we had it right in the middle, but then subsequently felt that this is a, because sometimes you may have some trucks or pickups coming to the self-storage. And we have multi-tenant on the right-hand side, so they were suggesting maybe why don't you have a separate entrance on one side? So it's easier to isolate the self-storage parking from the other, for the rest of the tenants.
And in the retail space, approximately how many stores would there be in the retail?
Yeah, so we are looking at about six to seven. There's about eight thousand square feet of retail and six to seven depending on the need. So I'll walk you through a few specific examples of, I mean, we have some office suites, some, and the rent space is, I have a multi-tenant. So we walk you through what, how we plan to do that. Potentially it all depends on the need as well.
Okay.
This is based on top of the research. So these are some pictures of how we're looking at the developments. So we will make sure that we have our clothing greenway on the property. So it provides, again, make sure that people are able to walk through the property, walk and this includes walkability score. And the parking lot will be the front. We will, there's been some adjustments to it in terms of where the dump, where the driveway will be located. That is again based on feedback from our last meeting, so we haven't been able to get it to three D rendering yet. But we'll do, we'll do that as soon as we can. Some additional, additional pictures of how this will look, some additional front facades. And these are all, we don't want to use fast stone as Max mentioned. And we look at some examples, there's some companies in, in Charlotte, actually, in the northern part of Charlotte that manufacture fast stones and that's one of the companies that mostly look at those products. And it looks exactly like deliberate. So going into the zoning overview, right, so what we're looking for is about twelve zoning. So I'm walking through those twelve and we, we can walk through all the twelve or in case you, you want me to reply as one of you. I think we can do that as well. So the first one is extending the resting life from two years to five years. And this is basically, basically around the, right now this, this property has a single family home. And I've already spoken to Union County Water. And there is a capacity that we may, we have to increase the sewer, sewer water capacity. We have to make sure that the tenants have sufficient capacity. So that's something which we are still working with in the company. So because of sewer limitations, this may, so we're requesting an increase from two years to five years. That's the first one. Second, conditions on the request is permitting a self-storage facility with an integrated shipping retail store. We don't reach out to UPS, but UPS, I think they mentioned that it's, UPS, UPS, I think it doesn't meet in the, in the radius. They, we look at its those appear as well. So non-compete, so they've already got the UPS stores, none in, none in Stallings, but there are.
There is one.
Indian Trail.
Oh, Stallings?
In Stallings, yeah. It's in the Stevensville Plaza, Lawyers and Stevensville Road.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Got it. And what I think the one in, in the chair kind of overlaps this, with this one. So we're looking at other options for shipping stores inside, inside our facility. The third one is exile, including exile offices permitted to use, right now it is not an industrial zoning. So that's another third request. The fourth one is even spaces with permitted use, which is also not a, in, in industrial zoning. And mounted and commercial in conjunction with our self-storage facility. And here we have a video example, but we, depending on the number of, who kind of gets, we value see interest. That's how we can put the usage. And relief from sidewalk along Gribble Road. One thing I'll mention is right now we're requesting a relief, but let's say five years on the line that every property on Gribble Road happens to get this sidewalk. We're more than happy to come by that point to develop a sidewalk, where there's a need. The next is around approve the installation of exterior sign, identification signage. Cause that is, because this is industrial zone, so there's limitations on what these signs I can use. So we're requesting so that they, our tenants are given a visa, some, some stores, right? So we'd be able to kind of mark it up, mark it out of the property.
Ask a quick question back on number four. I guess when you're coming up with your, your design, that the having an event space was strongly considered when devising, like determining how many parking spots are in the facility?
That's right, sir. Typically, given spaces get filled up on weekends and Fridays. So the other users, because we're looking at, say, if it's a playroom or class or a dance class, it's usually not as busy on, on, on weekends. So that's why we're trying to match those. Okay. Front-facing parking lot, that's something Max mentioned. Again, that's primarily because of the noise from Berry Plastics. So we wanna make sure that we can have a buffer of the parking and before we get to the building. And steel cladding on back and side, side, side building, side facade. So I'm walking through right exactly, we're looking for the, the steel cladding. The retail will all be brick. It's only the self-storage part of the building that we're requesting to use steel cladding. Fast stone and brick I mentioned, we even spoke about that. Dumpster on the front of the buildings, that gets easier for the dump truck, the garbage truck to take, take it off. But of course we make sure that this is covered, but it's just on an open dumpster, we should have covered it so it's pleasing. And permanent HVAC placement along, along Tracy's, I think the hood. Because of the length of the buildings, that we wanna get some, again, I'm not, I'm not an engineer, but I haven't spoken to some of the initial HVAC folks. There's some, there's requirement to, because of the length of the buildings, we wanna keep a few HVAC pads in the size of the building as well. So these are the list of our conditional zoning and I think Max had a few additional ones that he had mentioned. So any of those if you, I can walk through one by one or if there's, if there's somebody you want me to focus on, first I can go through them.
Another question about the event space. I know you have, as Max said, a significant amount of detail in your proposal, which is very helpful. Listed at about two thousand square feet, which then you said it could be for about a hundred to a hundred and twenty-five people, which does not seem to be a congruent amount of space for that number of people.
So when we added some initial studies, right? So typically you have about fifteen square feet per, a person either have fifteen square feet is what my initial studies have been. That's why we came up with a hundred to one twenty-five people sitting in there's two thousand square feet in that space.
Are you thinking like, like what, so you mentioned like weekends later enough, later at night? So I'm thinking you're like parties.
About your party or something like that, Chris?
Yeah. Cause like I, I spent some time last night looking at like, what is the size of a two thousand square foot room? To be able to seat that many people and then have like a dance floor, it seems like you may not have enough space. Yeah, I, I could be wrong because this is not my area of expertise. Just trying to think ahead for, for your purposes to make sure that if you do have that type of space there, that it is one that people would say this is adequate for our needs versus no, it's too small and we don't wanna use it.
Cause you, cause you have a total of forty-five parking spaces.
Yes.
So that would be something to consider, could that handle depending on your size of the unit? But could that manage that capacity there?
Okay. Yeah, I'll certainly make a note of that. I'll, I'll see what we can, how we can accommodate. Cause of, of course, we don't want to create something which our parking space is not permanent or it does not, it cannot, you know, be finished.
Cause I'm thinking that in the close area around that, there is not a lot of available parking, if there was overflow, so. Like how far would it be to park at the park and walk to that?
So just to remind, he's requesting just the use of it?
Right.
Doesn't have to put it in.
Got you, yeah, yeah, alright.
Additional example, right? So what we have done is for each of these, of course, we're the next one. So if you provide some evidence in terms of, for example, of why we're looking for an integrated shipping and packing, packing retail stores. So this also kind of winds out how we are thinking conceptually of our plan. So the, the green ones, they say self-storage facility, then we have the office suites, which are about thirty-two hundred square feet. The even spaces, our initial plan is two thousand, but again, as Max mentioned, right? If we, if we're gonna find a tenant and we probably don't need one. So we'll, basically I'm working through those, this is like our initial phases right now. And then a market and commercial for about middle, middle to hundred square feet. That's typically the, that's the layout that we're looking for in this property. And each of the twelve conditions on the request that we have, we have a similar amount of detail in terms of why we're looking for an exception, how would this benefit the town?
What was it that, you know, in your research made you decide that this, this was the, that should be a self-storage facility versus any other kind of use of, of, of this space?
So we're trying to optimize the size of the property and the number of parking spaces and retail. And we always want to kind of, we, my friend at the office here, so we wanna always start as self-storage, self-storage facility and an own business. So so in fact, when we started, we wanted, we looked up, looked for a property which, with self-storage facility. So that's why we added that as our use case, yeah.
And you said the self-storage was indoor access, right? You go in from the outside inside, so it's all internal?
Yes, internally.
Okay.
So the, the shipping off of the thirty by forty that you see here, you have a ten-feet corridor that, little indoor corridor that will provide access to the self-storage facility, which is in the back of the property.
Okay.
You may, someone answered this. So I'm thinking about in, in a plaza like this where there's these storefronts, is there any type of back exit or like service door for deliveries or would it all have to come through the front?
For the, for the retail, we'll have everything through the front. Because the back side would be the self-storage facility.
Okay.
But we're patient to include whether we need five exits. We either have on the side or do you have two rows in the front to make sure that it's being supplied, provided.
Max, do we require like a front and back exit on businesses for that purpose?
So that will be under Italian building code, fire code.
Okay.
So we don't, we don't include that?
Okay.
The self-storage facility was, will have required number of exits in the back and the sides as well, so.
Now, you might have already said it, would it be accessible twenty-four hours a day for the renters of the storage facility? Or would it have shorter business hours than that?
We, to be honest, we haven't kind of worked on that yet.
I'm just trying to think, would people be coming? I'm just trying to think, would people be coming potentially in and out at any time during the night and?
Yeah, we certainly want to look at, uh, we want, we want to look at some other facilities, what, what they do in terms of safety, in terms of, um, what's the right, um, so, uh, what's the right thing to do? So this, you haven't come, come back yet.
Just to give you a little direction on that, we've, we've owned storage pieces for a while, different place we live, and typically they shut it off at ten at night, your entrance. So it's usually, it's usually eight, eight A M. to ten P M. or ten A M. to ten P M. You have to relax, it's just a, to the facility.
Thanks.
I mean, there's a couple in the area that you could just look at, and it's pretty much what they have, pretty consistent.
Okay, thanks for that.
Is there, do they have a longer review by the fire marshal, or is that still too early for that?
I've had one conversation with the fire marshal, um, and, uh, I think we're just talking about not inside the, the building, but more the exterior of the building, so that is the, and that's why we, uh, we more want to make sure there's two driveways. So the fire paters can enter and exit without having to, back up and reverse. Um, that was, and that was a, one discussion I had with him, and he also want, what, what, wanted us to start talking to Union County Water to see what's the pressure of the water and where we have fire items, so he was, he would, he asked us to do that, so that's, so. Um, I can just kind of go through some of the other flags that's okay with you, and let me know, okay? So this is around the requesting for office suites and permit use, so there's a lot of, uh, exit offices in, perhaps some. Um, installing is based on my initial research, I didn't find much, it is something which will be, it can be something like insurance office or or IT services, marketing agencies, small, we focus that one, we can set up like a two or three, a five or three feet, uh, office suite. Uh, but they, they can afford like a two thousand square feet, uh, rental space, so a small office where we can, people can have it within and, and work as a that's the, uh, use case for, uh, exit, exit offices here. Um, next is the event space, so again, uh, do you find, my, um, this is, again, based on preliminary, preliminary research, we protect hundred to one twenty-five to fit in two thousand, but, um, we did some research in terms of what is our, what are other, what are other, other event spaces to respect, with, with, with considering factors. And, uh, multi-tenant commercials, so this is something, uh, this is another three, thirty-two hundred square feet we're looking at. We initially targeting at kids' activity centers, um, like martial arts, dance schools, or, or any of those which meet the, meet, meets the community. Um, so our other uses that we're looking at is also dog rooms along, or salon, salons, which, as long as which are permitted in, uh, the industrial space. Um, sidewalk from Gribble Road, so I think Max already, and you probably have seen, you've seen similar, uh, presentations, I, I will look through the details. Just some examples of, there's probably, there's no sidewalk requirement, it's industrial. Um, there is, uh, right now, we also have scales along Gribble Road, so installing sidewalks cannot set that. And there's some examples of other projects, presence of other sidewalk, uh, projects that have, uh, current dividends from our sidewalk, you know. Um, so signage, uh, just marking exam, uh, the areas where we're looking for, um, signage, so we'll be requesting a landscape signage in the front of the property, next to, close to the driveway. And, uh, storefront sign on the, uh, front, uh, building facade. Uh, parking lot in front of the building, and, uh, mentioned that already, so this is primarily because of the noise from thirty-two hundred. So it's, and second is, it's also easier for, uh, people to drive in and try to go out with the, the stores. Um, now, you know, going to the steel plating, right, so we're looking for steel plating on KC Circle. The back of property and Gribble, and the Gribble Road, which is on the, uh, which is on the self-storage facility. For the retail, we'll make sure it's, um, it's, it's brick, or the fast, fast stone.
The adjacent property behind it or south of that, that's, uh, currently residential or is it?
It's a, it's a, it's a church or mosque, I think.
It's a Turkish.
It's a Turkish church.
Turkish church. I'm not a hundred percent sure, um, what their name is.
Can I keep moving?
Sure, go ahead, go ahead.
And, uh, so here's some examples of, uh, fast stone, what you see here, um, are actual examples of fast stone that I visited from the websites of the companies, they were to provide me. And I've also seen a few, they also brought, asked for, I also asked for examples in Charlotte, and then provided, went through a few. And, um, in fact, if it's, if we look at, uh, Harbor Freight stores, they all use, uh, uh, fa- fast stones. So those are, are an example of, Harbor Freight is a popular example, so, um, even, uh, Golden Corral on, in Independence, I want to locate, or maybe in, uh, in, uh, a town Charlotte, or close to a town Charlotte, that uses, uh, fast stone as well. So those are examples, and, uh, uh.
Uh, it's quite common on all kinds of commercial projects, yeah, and residential, so, yeah.
Yeah, it is.
And, uh, then I, I'm also requesting, as I mentioned, right, dumpster in front of the property, just to make sure that, um, you're able to kind of get the truck inside and out without having to turn too much of, without having to hassle, but I make sure the dumpster is covered, so it doesn't kind of upset, uh, it doesn't go against how the property is or how the, uh, environment is.
So you'd have like the fence around it like most places do?
Yes, a, a fence that, uh.
A little, open it through the doors, like you can access it, okay.
Yeah.
And finally, the last one is around the HVAC placement. Uh, we asking for permission, a request to place HVAC on size of the property. Uh, specifically on traces, traces of, like, one of Gribble Road. And we make sure the cover, to have some tree cover, foliage coverage, to make sure that it's not as visible from the roads. So that's our little request.
Thank you for your excellent.
Yeah, it's comprehensive presentation. Very complete, very complete. Good job.
I did, I was spending thirty minutes reading this last night.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, no, it's went over, a lot of stuff, yeah. But very thorough.
So you have some, uh, things, um, yeah, you have, um, so do you all have any questions for the staff?
For you, a question.
Of course.
Um, just to remind us all, uh, conditional zoning. Like for the signage and that stuff, that kind of thing.
So he's requesting changes from that, from the workings?
Okay, so when he, so they build it and they have a tent that's.
It would follow what's on the conditional zone. And we would, we would review the conditional zoning with the permit.
Okay.
Um, cause we have, just like we do with like development agreements and then variances and things like that. So, like, for example, like if rich gets permitted, and she can only look at map, see what the zoning is, and look to see if it has a conditional zoning or variance. Um, and then check all those. Cause sometimes we have development agreements, like a hundred pages, we have to read that when it gets.
Yeah, yeah. That was a, dumpster. Any other comments for us?
No, that's all.
Anybody have a motion?
The dumpster location is troubling being, being right in the front.
What about it?
Uh, you know, those things never get closed, they're always open, you can see the dumpsters or whenever the trucks come in. And, and also the smells.
Well, I will say, if you go to Indians Row, that legal that they built, when you drive in, you have to go around the dumpster. And it's a word of love, so this, it's a big store, so. And smell, that's the other problem. So it would be up to, I guess.
It's a condensed site, it's very difficult to place the dumpster. What we do is we require dumpsters in our rear. Um, but I think it's not possible with the size of the building, it's a little.
And it's not gonna be. And then if you look. It's not gonna be food service as a tenant, correct?
Yeah, that's why I was saying the waste price would mostly be paper.
Right, yeah, all prescription ones, right?
Just another aerial.
It would depend on the, on the event space and what you're using, the administrative.
You know. Talking about the dumpster. What if you, I mean, what's the difference if you flip the whole thing around? And, well, then you have the back of the building that's facing Starings, right?
Isn't that something that they could possibly do, but with staff for research?
Have storage, like, yeah, you'd have that on the backside with the, you'd have to use a lot of brick or something.
If it was in the town center zoning, that's what you would be seeing today.
And then the main access would be off a Gribble Road, not off, which would make more turning traffic in that.
Yeah. Yes, yeah, so that's not real.
Yeah.
Cause that's what I'm thinking about, is the balance of, you want people to turn in and use those businesses, but if they're driving on the main road and don't see them. Obviously out of mind.
Make it tight, yeah, make it tighter, yeah.
Cause I agree with your point.
It should be, people have visibility, yeah.
Maybe just, uh, like, maybe for counseling, um, just, just. It's very good practice, right? Um. I've, I, I don't have any answers for the dumpster at this moment. But, um, the applicant, I just told him to consider alternative locations for four days to counsel. And, um, have that ready for counsel. If you want to make a suggestion, then make sure that's on the council radar.
How frequently are commercial dumpsters serviced in, do we know?
I apologize, I don't think I can do that. Um, the town does have some residential service, but I don't know.
And this would be individually contracted by the?
The commercial.
Right, okay.
So, but I don't, I don't know.
Right.
Um, we did have one down in Chestnut, that was like every, like, they used to do it before our um, six A M. on Fridays or something, you know, wake up the neighbors, and we had to enforce it.
Enforce you?
But I don't remember, I, it, it felt like it was only once a week, um, from what I remember. But it was probably more. Because that's Ramario's, I'm sure you know, do more than.
That's what we.
I'm sure Mars is probably twice at least.
Maybe, yeah.
The volume, need to be volume there, so.
Do you have any other questions about the site layout, besides the dumpster that you'd like council to consider?
I mean, is there a different option for that? The way, and as far as the layout goes, is there a different option for the dumpster?
I don't know if he's researched that at the moment, um, but do, do you know, there's a, I mean, you, no, he hasn't looked, I just had to.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, sorry about that, yeah, um.
I mean, I don't, given that you don't have, you know, enough room in the back to have another access, that it'd be kind of.
Fine.
It would be difficult to do that.
Yeah, and trace circles.
And you'd have to have enough, you need a big enough area for the trucks to get in and out.
I mean, would there, I mean, would the drive be enough from the driveway standpoint to have it located where the storage facility is? In other words, as you drive back past the retail and then you, you could have the dumpster at the entrance, say, of the storage facility? Somebody more in toward the back.
All the way in the.
All the way from the deck?
On, on the left side, in other words, as you're coming in, right, you go past the retail, and as soon as you hit the doors, maybe right before the entrance to storage. You can maybe have it there.
Well, you'd have to have room for that big truck to face it directly, yeah.
Well, no, I understand, but they're gonna have to have room for trucks for storage anyway.
Maybe.
Have you actually thought about that, um, that's a suggestion, but only thing is, the, the dumpster has to orient in the front. And I think that that's why it's also kind of facing the, uh, facing the driveway, so the truck can come in, and because a truck, truck has to be facing the, the dumpster.
Yeah.
So the truck is pulling in, it picks it up and dumps it back this way?
Yes, that's right.
Yeah.
And then it would just back right out onto the.
Yes, so this is essentially do it on the side, whereas commercial, it's mostly in the front.
Okay.
So there wouldn't, there wouldn't even be, for a truck of that size, it couldn't even do a three-point turn in the parking lot, it would have to.
It might damage a few cars all the way.
Yeah, yeah.
They're, they're large.
There's a lot of. Could you imagine backing that truck out on that road?
No.
See, you have it on Homero Road.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, just a thought, okay.
Well, I guess the other question is, if it pulls in there, dumps the load, rather than backing out, if it goes through the parking lot and then pulls out onto Gribble to make a turn, that kind of.
In terms of you, it allows access, yeah.
Yeah, that was my other question. That was my other question too, was, um, Joe, you had mentioned that, that might be for like emergency access, so how, how would that work? Like, would it be chained off most times, or what was your conversation with, with N C D O T. about that Gribble Road entrance?
Yeah, so I, I, I'd refer, I, uh, so I need to include driveways to make sure we have emergency access as well. I would like to make this a, a permanent driveway, the second one, the Gribble Road, a permanent driveway. But I have, I need to speak to N C D O T. to make sure that, is, does that, because it's closer to section, that's why I have my doubts. So if follow these and they don't allow me to keep it as a permanent driveway, I would just chain it off and use only for emergency. I'm hoping this is not emergency, but.
There, yeah, they're gonna want a second exit for, for our truck.
Yes.
And then maybe they, maybe they will, it's just a right turn only, out of there, that's what I'm wondering.
Yes.
Cause you can't turn left, I mean, that's almost an impossibility at that, you know. As now, because it is.
They might also suggest maybe to accommodate that, would be to reduce the building length for the retail.
Yeah.
To allow them to command maybe ahead of where the self-storage is.
So that's my next question, is I don't see any dimensions on here. Uh, I mean, there's a scale, but I, I haven't had time to scale it. Uh, you had mentioned if we, in the future, do want to put sidewalks down on Gribble, there would be space to put one in. Is there space to put one in?
So right on the seventeen feet from the road and, uh, building, so a sidewalk would be about five feet. So if there is a need in the future, we can.
But you wouldn't have the plant in.
Yeah.
Well, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't become center though, right? It wouldn't be the same standard.
It's industrial, it's industrial.
Um, so.
Cause the planning would take up the five feet.
As part of this, so just a little bit more context, just, um, what I think might be the best solution for planning board is to I mean, bringing up a lot of good points, maybe make a recommendation and make a recommendation to address the dumpster location. That's kind of like more so, um, I think the, the, the goal, end goal for planning board. And then, instead of, uh, critiquing every, um, um, like, like all the minutia, I guess. But also, um, let's, let's just assign it, and then plant, part of the subcommittee meeting, one of the council members requested that maybe he extend the building to make it larger, since he's requesting alleviation from the sidewalk. So it's a little, the building's actually extended a little bit larger and larger based on one of the council members, subcommittee members' notes. So just wanted to give you a little bit of context on, on that as well.
And we, maybe we could put a, a note to council to consider potential future Gribble Road sidewalk and dumpster placement.
Correct, yes. That would be a great suggestion.
So approve it as is with those two.
If you want to approve it, yeah, and then I also made note to address any changes that you'd want, or anything that you'd want the applicant to have to decide, then would be something that you'd want to recommend.
Okay.
Does that help make, uh?
Yeah, it does.
Okay.
Anything else?
No.
No, that's good.
Anybody who want to make a motion?
Sure, so I'd like to make a motion to approve the request of CZ two five dot oh three dot oh two. Uh, with the recommendations from planning board to council for further consideration of the dumpster location and the future possibility of a Gribble Road sidewalk. Uh, as well as to, um, make a statement of consistency and reasonableness that these, uh, that this complies with the, uh, town's comprehensive land use plan, that it is both consistent and reasonable.
I'll second.
Uh, everybody in favor?
Aye.
Great. Yeah. Thank you, I just want to make sure that it was clear, because I know that we had, um, in the, in the planning board in the past scrutinized very little things based on this, but we kind of like, we're looking at a little bigger picture, I guess, we're trying to, that helps. Um, but if you have any questions about how that goes, please let me know, I'll be happy to explain that. Um, and then. Next agenda item.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you very much, excellent presentation.
Good presentation.
Thank you.
And, uh, senior audience.
Uh, the text amendment TX, uh, dot oh seven, dot oh one.
Katie. From Sarah.
So this is text amendment TX twenty-five zero seven zero one. Um, where Sack is proposing an update to multiple articles of Stalin's Development Ordinance. And this amendment will clarify for. And this amendment will clarify, or will improve clarity and consistency of the existing standards. And will also ensure that all development elements remain due to residents, developers and SAP. And then while I go through each, um, amendment, uh, the black text is what is currently written in our ordinance. And then any of the red texts are new additions or revisions to those articles. And I want to reiterate that this amendment is only meant to clarify our existing ordinance, none of these changes alter the enforcement of these standards. Um, so first we have article two point thirteen dash seven C, um, where we changed the wording concerning swimming pool requirements to better explain, explain their fitness guidelines. Um, we've had several residents confused about these standards when they're applying for pool permits. And then also in article two, we added a new section to highlight the current definition of family in our ordinance. And then in article three, we updated the definition of family care home to include a separation radius, which went to general statutes one sixty B dash nine oh seven. And in article eight point four dash five A, um, we removed a duplicate sentence about parking. Article eight point four dash nine F is just to correct this reference to open space, originally said article two, supposed to be article twenty one. And article eight point four dash nine G, um, remove the reference to an image that doesn't actually exist in that article. Um, article nine point two dash two A four, uh, is to clarify the language for the location of accessory structures.
What, what's the significance of the difference between principal and primary structure?
They're interchangeable, yeah, and we have a, a, like, it says that in the ordinance as well, so that way people can understand that.
Okay.
And article ten point one, um, we're proposing to edit the subsection A of all of those articles listed there. Um, all of the current articles individually list out what zoning districts are these standards apply to. Um, and it makes it very tedious to have to update these every time that we have a table of uses amendment. By changing this to a blanket statement that just says that you have to refer to the table of uses to see what zoning districts these standards apply to, I'm going to make, where we don't have to continuously update that every single time we add a member. And article seventeen point six, um, it currently references, this section is seventeen point seven one, it's supposed to be seventeen point six one. And article seventeen point eight, it references two sections that, um, is supposed to be seventeen point four and seventeen point five. But SAP does recommend approval of T X twenty five zero seven zero one, uh, because this amendment works to enhance the clarity and usability of the STONGS development ordinance while also maintaining its effectiveness. Any questions?
Could you please go back to the family care home item?
Well, that, that came up in the town council meeting last night.
That's what I asked.
During the public comments.
Yes, uh, and, and so what exactly is being changed here?
Um, just the wording around, um, general statutes one sixty D dash nine oh seven, um, that allows up to a half mile radius between each established daily care home. Um, so as long, we just have, are adding that to the ordinance, but it's currently allowed under that general statute.
So is this in relation to what has come up in public comment in front of council?
Uh, yeah.
Okay. So this is to say, just for clarity, so if we have one, uh, at property A, then you're drawing a circle of a half mile and nothing else can be within that?
Correct.
Okay.
And that includes other jurisdictions. So it's one trail, one trail.
Okay.
Got it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, excellent.
I move that we approve, uh, text amendment of T X twenty five dot oh seven dot oh one.
Second?
Second?
All others in favor?
Aye.
This does not require a consistency. It does?
Yeah, it does.
Okay, sorry.
I also move that we find that T X twenty five dot oh seven dot oh one is consistent and reasonable with the comprehensive land use plan.
A second, Dan.
Second?
All others in favor?
Aye.
All right, uh, anything else, any other bases, anybody?
This is a germ.
Somebody want to make a motion, turn germ.
Make motion, turn germ, I'll say.
All others in favor?
Aye.